One, two.
Good evening. I'm calling to order the October 8th meeting of the Milton School Committee. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We're starting with public comment. In accordance with school committee policy, we welcome members of the community to share their perspectives with us during public comment. We've set aside up to fifteen minutes for this part of the meeting, and individuals may speak for up to three minutes each. While the school committee does not respond directly to public comment, there may be opportunities for members to address issues that are raised over the course of the meeting when relevant topics are on our agenda. We strive to engage in respectful discourse during our meeting and ask the public comment speakers to keep that in mind. Speakers should introduce themselves for the record. Do we have anybody? Don't have anybody in the room. Is there anybody online?
We remind them to raise their hand.
If you are interested in speaking, if you could raise your hand. Alright, looks like there isn't anybody. The next agenda item is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Very thankful to be here tonight to update the public in the community and the school committee on a few things that are going on in the Milton Public Schools. First and foremost, over the last few meetings you have, we have been addressing the transportation issue that has been put upon the district this school year. We did listen to several folks give us their concerns related to getting their children to school and the long waitlist. We're happy to announce tonight that over the last several weeks, we have been able to, with the hard work of Assistant Superintendent for Finance Katie Blake and others, take forty-eight students off that waitlist and put them onto buses. We have been engaging with families and engaging with the bus company for several weeks in order to come up with some creative thinking around the bus routes and how many students can ride the bus to school each day, given the amount of students that were on that waitlist. So, we had a waitlist that we were able to reduce, putting forty-eight students on that bus two weeks ago. All those students were informed, all bus passes were mailed home, and those students are currently riding the bus. We were also very, very happy to get the support from Principal Bill Fish, who's in the audience tonight at the middle school. Bill was opening the school at seven AM for all those families that are still on the waitlist to be able to come in one half hour earlier, go to the cafeteria, get some homework done, and be ready for breakfast in order to support any family who has a commute that would be made possible with some early drop-off time. So those two strategies, we feel, have alleviated the bus list quite substantially. Please note that there are still folks on the bus waitlist. Then we are taking this week in order to collect some data about how much space is left on the buses that we might be able to utilize. And a little fact that I just want to put out to the community is that our buses are legally able to have a certain capacity of roughly sixty-four students. Sixty-four, I'm looking at Katie Blake for that number?
Seventy.
Seventy students. We currently in most districts usually use for middle and high school a lower number than that because the students are bigger, and it forces, seventy-four capacity forces all seats to be used with three students per seat, which for high school students and some of our middle school students is not a viable option, given all the things that they bring to school and they're bigger human beings. We started with a capacity of fifty within Milton, which a lot of districts do. And we asked the bus company and our staff to go on and take a look at how old our students were, how big they were, how many sixth graders were riding the bus, and could we actually move roughly forty-eight students onto the bus and keep the same amount of buses. So we increased the capacity to roughly fifty-five students or so per bus. And that was predicated on us looking at how full the bus was, how old the students were. This week, we'll be doing a further assessment of, even with those added forty-eight students, is there still more capacity that we could maybe add more students back to each bus for a second round of reductions from the waitlist and additions to regular school buses that we will look at this week and make some determinations. So in our communications with our families on the waitlist, first of all, the families that got the the letter that said you now are able to come off the waitlist and join the bus, they're excited, they're happy, and they're driving the bus. But the ones that are still on the waitlist, we asked to wait two weeks until we could make a second round assessment, and then hopefully call folks sometime next week and let them know if there's any room on their particular bus. I should say that this was complicated by the waitlist being done by bus and bus route. It wasn't just one long list, it was actually disaggregated by bus. And the bus company did do their bus routing this year a little differently. So there are some considerations that we're trying to do for those families who may have been put on the wrong bus to begin with in order to see if we can help facilitate the father's families from the school being able to have access to the bus first. And that's how the waitlist was created initially. So, we are going to facilitate bus refunds for those who want them, and we will be communicating next week with the next round of options. After that round is complete, this will be the last set of work that we will do around transportation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And I would say on this issue that this is in the front of our minds for our budgeting work that we're doing over the next two months, adding a bus to the fleet, reorganizing our stops and routes in a more effective way with the bus company, and being able to communicate all of this in the spring in enough time for folks to understand the process. All the lessons learned and new strategies will be implemented for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. My next update is on teaching and learning. We're happy to say that the school visits have started. We are doing principal learning walks in all of our buildings. We go to maybe one or two schools a week. Colacosa and I have been to the high school, Tucker, Colicott. Pierce will be at the Cunningham tomorrow. We walk through three or four classrooms, we have a protocol. We sit and talk about the observations with the building principal. All of this is in an effort to do a lot of diagnostic work, observation work, and unpacking with the principals, what are they seeing and what are we seeing in terms of the effectiveness of what's happening in the classrooms? What are these good news stories that we want to share? It also serves as a way to validating and giving teachers the attention in the due respect that they deserve around watching what they do well and giving them positive feedback on that work and making sure that they know that at their classroom level, that central office is actually interested, grateful, and really wanting to have impact on the classroom this year and supporting them in that work. So, it's a multi-layered effect, and we'll be doing that work every week of the school year for this school year. So, thank you to all the teachers that, you know, took us in, allowed us to be part of their classroom. Thank you to the students who are very excited to see us do the learning walks, doing math groups at the Colicott last week on the floor with students who are doing traditional division, and also the new types of division was exciting, so all good stuff. Principal and coordinator meetings have been up and running, this is new at the elementary level, and also the way we're doing them this year with the secondary as well. This is where all of our teaching and learning work will be done with our leadership team and our building principals. We, I believe, are in our third round of these meetings so far this year, and they are creating our professional development, they're helping us focus on our five leadership team focus areas, and coordinating the development, the professional development, like the one that we had today in the district for the early release. And so families know, what did the teachers actually do today while my child got dismissed early? We actually took all of your MCAS scores of each school. Every principal was able to execute a set of slides with the school data and the district data that was driven by one slideshow for all schools. So we're continuing this theme of central office providing consistent communication around teaching and learning in the professional development. So the first, maybe eight or nine slides were district-based, and then the remaining slides were school-based. And then teachers would go back and unpack that and connect that to their work this year in their classrooms and with their students. We always send out a feedback form to all staff, asking them for more feedback. What we heard after our first professional development was that they wanted more collaboration time, that they liked the flexibility of what we were doing. So we're being very explicit about using that feedback to inform how we do our next professional development. The teachers are our customer, we're trying to work for them around professional development in service to our students. So it's really important to get that feedback, and so we appreciate, I think we had almost a hundred and seventy replies to our feedback form at our last PD, and we'll send that out again tomorrow. And lastly, we will be presenting those MCAS scores to the school committee at our October twenty-second meeting. And we look forward to that night as well.
Thank you. The next item is the...
Sorry, can I?
Go ahead, sorry.
Yes, two things. One, do y'all have updated numbers on how many kids are left on the waitlist? I heard forty-eight kids came off for transportation, sorry.
There were twenty-five left in, roughly of the twenty-five. Fifteen lived more than a mile away, and ten lived a mile or less away. That's from the original waitlist for those folks who applied for the bus on time. There is another list of folks who did not apply on time that we weren't even able to address, given the volume and given the bus capacity.
And how many people on that list?
On the second list?
Yeah.
I don't know an exact number, I'm gonna try to give you a ballpark number, I'm trying to think, Katie might have it.
I don't know the exact number. I believe it was over fifty students that were on that list, but I don't...
It was a sizable number.
Thank you all for all your work on trying to whittle that down, and twenty-five is a lot less than obviously where we started with. And so appreciate all your efforts, and also, again, to open up the school, you know, an hour before. That's great, love that, even for Cunningham, because we have a four-school, which is great, but I pay for that. But, again, I really appreciate it.
Bill Fish is footing the bill over at Pierce, so he's...
I appreciate you, Bill. It's very, very nice. The only other question I had was on the MCAS. Is it possible for the slides for the school committee presentation to be shared, you know, a week in advance? It's not a you issue, it's just the past couple of years when we've gotten them, I think I've gotten them like the day of, which is then like not allowed for a whole lot of opportunity to like have...
Yes, with the Friday before the meeting work, or even before...
If that's possible, that'd be great.
Yeah, no, they're pretty much, because we made them for every school today, they'll just be an extension of the current common set of slides that we have, so yes, we can do that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, what else? So the next item is the preliminary, going over the field trips, the preliminary field trip approval.
So, we have three trips planned and that are on the docket tonight from the middle school. We also have Principal Bill Fish, who can answer questions specific to each one of these proposals. Just an overview of all three. We have two trips that have been consistently implemented at the Pierce Middle School, one of which is the Washington DC trip, which is for all eighth graders, and want to commend Principal Fish for all being all and him ensuring that every student who wants to go on this trip can go on this trip, to the point where he went last year with students who were maybe challenged in the ability to navigate the trip, and he made sure that they were there. So, all does mean all to Bill Fish, so Bill, thank you for that. The second trip is the trip to Quebec City, which is run through our world language department and our students who are in the French immersion program. And the new partner trip to that. I want to thank Sina Hamada and her team of Spanish and Latin teachers in the middle school for picking up this work and following through and making this available to, and making this available to the Pierce community. I can bring, if people have questions, I can certainly bring Bill to the table in order to answer any of those. So Bill, would you like to come up to the table, please? Welcome, Bill. So the outline that Bill provided has sections that represent the educational objectives, the description of how the study, how the safety of the students will be maintained, the proposed budget, including the cost to students and sources of finances, including fundraising, estimate of number of students and adults participating, general plan and schedule, procedures in emergencies and notification, and procedures for students if separated from the group and the nursing services. So each one of those categories has been filled out by Bill and his team for each of the trips.
Because, question, the Quebec City trip, the Washington DC trip both happened last year, did the New York City trip also happen last year?
No, this is a new trip. The New York City trip would be a companion trip to the Washington DC's eighth grade students, the Quebec City's seventh grade French immersion students, and the New York City trip would be seventh grade Spanish and Latin students.
I noticed that the trips are on different weeks in May. And I'm just thinking logically speaking, would it make sense for all the trips to happen at the same time? So that, like, the teachers and the students are all going to be gone? The seventh and eighth graders are all going to be gone at the same time? And it just makes logical sense, I think? Like, if you have teacher who might be teaching both seventh and eighth grade, I don't think that happens. But, I don't know, it just feels like very choppy. Like, you have, first week you go to New York City, second week you go to Quebec, and then third week you go to Washington DC, so...
I could, I could see that from the Quebec trip and the New York City trip, because I know a hundred kids, I think, went to Quebec last year. And I know that was tough for students who didn't get to go, or just like, you know, faculty not being there and just interruptions in learning. So I was wondering if there was any way to kind of make those two happen at the same time?
We started, that was our starting point. Some of the challenges in the availability with the travel vendor and if for trips our size, that the Quebec City being about a hundred students, there's a limited window as to when some of these trips can be accommodated. That happened last year with the DC trip, we ended up going a few weeks later than we had historically gone because the week we had previously had always gone was Pride Week in DC, so the hotel rates were astronomical, and accessibility to the Smithsonian's and some of the other normal stops were challenging, and that is often for us one of the... adventures, so some of it, I appreciate where you're coming from, Hannah, you're absolutely right. It can be disruptive when a teacher's chaperoning and there's a teacher covering the class. But, there is also an operational aspect of needing enough adults in the building to cover it safely too. Because, in, yes, in an ideal world, every trip could happen simultaneously, and it'd be almost, but yet we also have to remember that, especially in seventh grade, not every student will attend.
Thank you.
So you're saying that seventh graders, not everybody's going to attend? It's an optional trip for seventh grader?
Yes.
But for eighth grader, is, they expect that everybody will attend?
It is, the way that, and John and I have spoken about this, I look at the Washington DC trip as, that's one that we want to, we want to ensure that every student who is mildly interested in attending that trip has the opportunity to. That is a class trip, that is a culmination of their middle school experience. The seventh grade trips to Quebec City, to the proposed new trip to New York City, those are really nice to haves. Very similar to the European trip that Milton High School did last year. So, we don't, we have seen more interest in the eighth grade trip, more universal interest in the eighth grade class trip than we've seen in the Quebec City trip. We expect there to be good interest in the New York City trip. We did poll families, sixth grade families last year to get a sense of whether it was worthwhile pursuing, pursuing the opportunity. But, I would, I would expect that the participation rate would be higher for the DC trip in eighth grade than it would be for the seventh grade optional trips.
You know, the Wildcat Den also offers a New York trip in November for middle schoolers? And, yeah, just for weekend?
Okay.
I don't know, like, it seems like there are some overlap. Obviously, this one would be language-focused and cultural immersion, all those stuff. But I'm just wondering, like, is it possible to have partnership between different places, different programs in the town? To perhaps, they have fundings pulled together, maybe the student, because the student that they serve is also middle-aged student, right? And our students in our middle schools are all of middle, middle school age. So, they, it's potentially that the same student would attend both New York trip, right? So I'm just thinking, like, is it possible to eliminating duplications?
Who's the group that's doing the other trip, and where do they go?
I think it's done by the Milton Partner Rack. From the Wildcat Den, that they, you know, they converted that old state, a firehouse into a teenage youth center place, and they offer a trip to New York City in November, because I remember seeing that in the flyer.
Just, again, with the size of our group, we're not always able to do every, you know, travel in as a full roll of six buses.
Great, no, I appreciate it, I think it's great, and I think the addition of the New York trip for the non-French-speaking kids is great. Totally understand the logistical challenges, I think the idea's a good one that we all both had. If there's a way to do that in the future, figure that out in the future.
That's, as I said, I think that we can, if, assuming there's enough interests in, I expect there will be interest in continuing the Quebec City trip, assuming that there's enough interest to have the New York City trip run as we're planning things further in advance now, it is the same travel vendor, Jump Street, to work with them to try to sync up the duration, the timing and the duration of the trips.
Thank you for all your work.
I just have a quick question about the DC trip. As you had mentioned, this past year it was a little later into June, and now it looks like it's back earlier into May.
Sure.
Are you still planning, and it's okay if you haven't thought this far ahead, but I think personally, and the feedback I've heard was just so phenomenal about the opportunity for rising sixth graders to spend that time in Pierce Building when the eighth graders were away. So, would that still be possible even if the trip was like in May, or on this timeframe?
Absolutely. That was one of the, I mean, there've been lots of shining points over the course of the past few years at Pierce, and I think that that transition to the step-up days and bringing our fifth graders over for the two days and the experience that our sixth grade teachers provided was definitely right at the top of that list. So, it, in our thinking, it doesn't matter. It happened to be last year, two of the last four days of school, or last five days of school, whether, if it's a few weeks earlier. Because even this, the... Because even this, these dates, it's three days leading into Memorial Day weekend. So it's still, I think it actually potentially would be better because students will still be presumably not distracted by the, you know, the end of the last couple of days and the end of year.
Great.
I'm really glad you brought that up because I wanted to just mark that for, for Bill and the Pierce is that we have our fifth graders coming in as a total group, all of the students, where it used to be where the kids would come to a camp if they could make it for a one week duration and not all students could do that, whether they were away or there, there was a money aspect to that. Bill has created an onboarding of our fifth grade children up to Pierce. All students meeting the sixth grade teachers, great transition opportunity for every single student in all four schools to come together and begin that process of building team around, being sixth graders the following year. And on the bookend of that, our eighth graders are leaving the middle school with this wonderful trip that a lot of people that Bill has organized in order to support financially, the families that may not be able to afford it, get a little support so that every student can attend. Really great bookend trips that include all students. So I really appreciate the thinking on that. It's by design, it's purposeful, it's good for students, it's good for families, and it's good for the morale and the, and the culture of Pierce. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Looks like that timing should also land pretty well with just after MCAS finishes for fifth grade science.
Just a couple of quick questions I'm taking from your comment, John. It sounds like with the fundraising that happens, that these trips, to what degree are any students excluded because the trips are cost prohibitive? And I'll just ask a second question, which is Quebec has a cap of 100 and New York has a cap of 200 attendees. And I'm wondering just if, if they're, so that adds up to 300, like is that, are there kids who are like waitlisted essentially? And what's the selection process of so?
For the first question about scholarshiping, so for the past three years, we have been able to send every student, every eighth grade student who's wanted to go to DC, to DC regardless of their ability to pay. And the two primary sources of funding is, one through the contract that we have with the vendor. We have a, there's a, there is an incentive based on the number of students that sign up and pay, and pay in full. We were given discretionary money. Some schools use it to pay the trip leader a stipend. We use ours to pay for kids to go. So last year we had, it was a neighborhood of 11,000 or 12,000 dollars in scholarship money that came back from, from EF. Then we also do an appeal to our families. And for the past, two of the past three years, those funding sources have completely covered all of the asks. When we, we look at, we analyze the students who aren't, who don't initially register and we personally reach out to families to ask them if they're, if they're aware of the trip, if they're interested. And without prying, try to find out what, if they're not signed up, what's their reason? And in some cases, some students, some families, some kids are just not interested in going. Some families aren't ready to send their children off without them. But once in a while, a parent will say, you know, it's, it's too much for me to do and I didn't want to ask for help, or I didn't know I could ask for help. And then we bring those, we bring them in and we got our participation up to, we were at 90%, 90% of our eighth graders last year attended that trip. For some families, it's a partial scholarship. For some families, it's a, it's a full scholarship. With Quebec City, and I would imagine that the format would be the same with New York City, this is where I put this in the, I said to John the other day, I would run through a wall to make sure that every eighth grader wanted to go to that trip, that they could. The seventh grade trips, they're incredible experiences, but they're, I put them in the nice to have category. And last year, we were able to thankfully, several families had asked for, about scholarship opportunities. We were able to tap into, you know, local families and some, some other resources to make that trip a reality for everybody. But I am, you know, we are careful about who we ask and how much money we ask for from the community and that priority is going to be, for me, is going to be on the DC trip. Because every student will have the opportunity. In terms of capacity, the, the cost of the trip is dictated by how full the buses are. Like so we're on, when you see a cap of 100 or a cap of 200, it's because you could put about 50 students on one of those, on those coach buses. And the more full they are, the lower the cost becomes for, the per unit cost becomes. So those, that's why those are in increments of 50s. There are 100, about 110 or 111 seventh grade French immersion students now. Last year, we had 101 sign up and we were, we did have a waitlist for one student. As it turned out, that person, that student was able to, was able to go. It's a little bit of an unknown with the New York City trip because I, we're not sure whether, there were lots of families that expressed interest when they were asked in the spring of sixth grade. How that comes to bear when we move forward is, is a little bit of an unknown right now.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bill.
There is no vote on that, that was just a preliminary.
So this is preliminary, has it tonight, and then this will be forward, we'll put it on the next agenda to be voted.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill, very much.
The next item is the DESI End of Year Report. And this will be a vote.
So we enclose in the folder the FY25 DESI End of the Year Report that is put together by Assistant Superintendent Blake. This is an annual exercise that we, we're not sure is actually a voteable topic, but we wanted to make sure that we're providing you motion language to approve the submission and would reflect the fact that it's in your hands and been sent to you specifically. A notice to review if you choose to do so. This is a standard annual task that, that Katie does with the state, along with a lot of other submissions that we do throughout the year for a variety of reasons. So that packet is in your folder for you to review. We're just asking, we're just notifying you that it is being submitted and that you're acknowledging that it's being sent by the district to DESI.
Anyone have any questions about it?
I'll make a motion to approve the submission of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education FY25 End of Financial Year Report.
Give a second. Is that it? Great. All in favor?
Great.
Great. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is the Chair's Report. So we finalized the school committee goals, I believe, at our, our last meeting. And one of the goals is around community engagement. I'm just going to pull up the exact language around it. And so the thought was that we could have a discussion and do some, some brainstorming and come away with some ideas around how to better engage the community, find, discuss ways to reach out, to communicate with the community. I know that in the past, there are ideas had been brought up. Last year, a good portion of our year, a lot of the communication really was around budget. That was the primary source of, topic of communication. So just that we could take this time now, come up with, you know, ideally it would be great even if we had two to three ideas that we walked away with that we could look at implementing this year. So we just wanted to open that piece up to discussion. If anybody wants to.
I remember, last year we discussed about this. We were saying that for all those district-wide events, whether it's sports events or other like Monster Dash events, we will send at least two school committee members to represent the group. And we can wear a school committee t-shirt or something like that to, to make ourselves more visible. Not sure if we're still going toward that. And I know that Mark already decided some t-shirt for us last year. And in the, the meeting with the high school representatives last year and with the former superintendent, we talked about how in Boston Public School Systems, they have a group of students who talk about what happened in the recent school committee meeting, a little broadcast that the student, a student and maybe one of the school committee members that created together. I have no idea the details about that. But it sounds interesting, so I have suggested we could do something similar in our school district because not everybody had time to sit down and listen to two hours of what we blah about at this meeting, right? And not many people would have time to, or the energy to take out our, our meeting minute to see what hap, what we have decided on, voted on, all those stuff. So maybe if we have another channel of social media, easy recording of either audio or video summarizing what happened in our recent school committee meetings, that could be a, good to have, I guess, especially for busy parents who work full times and don't have time to find information. I haven't brought that up because I haven't, I haven't met with the school, the high school rep. We are meeting for, for the first time on this Friday morning. So I will report back next week or next meeting.
On your, the point you just made about another thing that we've talked about is that would be even like a lower hanging fruit version of what you just said, I think, was to include in the communications that are already going out to families, a school committee section of the newsletter that could just highlight key takeaways from the meetings, like the most recent meeting as far as key votes that were made or key topics that were discussed. I think in the past, we have included, you know, links to recordings of meetings and whatnot, but I think maybe something in between that would not perhaps, it could be in addition to what you just said, but I think it would be probably like a simpler thing to implement. It would just require someone to be doing the work on behalf of the committee to just simply boil down the key bullet points to be shared. And in addition to that, another idea that I'd like to put on the table, which is something else we've talked about in different ways and done different things over ti, over the years, including last year, is some mechanism for community listening sessions or last year we did coffees pertaining to the calendar conversation. That was, I think, well received and informative. I don't know if they would need to be pertaining to a particular topic. We also did community forums on the budget, obviously, and I expect we'll do something along that line. But I would actually be in favor of something even a little less formal, more like office hours held by school committee members. This is something I have actually really wanted to do for a long time now and I've not had the bandwidth to do it, but I actually feel like I might have the bandwidth again to like really think about how to do that. I would be in favor of something like that if anyone else was up for it, just a touch point that's allows conversation with members of the community to be driven by the questions and concerns that they have. And if anyone else agrees that's something to explore, then we could, obviously would, we would need to like think together about how to roll that out, but we've talked about it before and we just haven't done it yet. So those, those like additional opportunities for members of the community come and meet, not with the full school committee, but with a smaller number of school committee members out in, whether it's schools or other places in the community, is something I'd like to add to the list of things to consider.
Just to piggyback on that, one of the things that we had talked about was even conceivably doing, you know, if you did a, say it's a coffee at a different school, like somebody will be there, you know, at Colicott, once, you know, it might just rotate. I think to your point earlier, having clarity around what we're asking, or sort of what the, what the point of the meeting is. So it's not, you know, I just, obviously wanting to be respectful of, you know, say it was at a school, that you're being respectful of the principal and you're being respectful of people running the school. So it's sort of, is there, you know, we were, we had that opportunity last year with the calendar, we had the opportunity last year with the budget, so it really helped frame that discussion. But having discussion around, you know, gathering input around a particular topic, I think might be, you know, be helpful if there are things that we thought we were looking to learn more about, you know, maybe Nathan, you would have some thoughts?
Well, I mean, I love those ideas, Lizzie. I think if we're going to be, I think in terms of a rationale for engagement, I think we're going to be looking for a permanent superintendent at some point over the next couple of years. We have the luxury of having this really long runway. And, you know, community perspectives can change in a couple of years, so it's not to say that if we were to talk to people next month that, you know, those perspectives are locked in for a couple of years, but I think we could take advantage of that runway to start learning about what the community wants in their next superintendent. I think that would be, that would be a valuable and productive thing and, you know, also, I think it would get, probably the six of us are thinking a lot about this question. I don't know that everyone else in Milton is thinking about this question just yet. And it would also sort of force the community to start thinking about, about that. So it'd be valuable. The other, I should probably know this, and I don't, but do, does Milton have a practice of regularly surveying families about their experience with schools? And do we have anything planned for this year?
I had a survey meeting with the data specialist, Jenny Bellavue, our Head of Guidance and Effie Shavers, our DEIB Director. We went through some potential surveys that may be going out to students and/or to the full school community. We're pausing several of those to get the timing up and right with our, with the needs of what we want to put those forward for. So we don't have any community-based surveys going out, I don't believe, this year. We have an annual survey with our students through the vocal of the MCAS, which we analyze that data, but I do not believe we have any adult family member-like surveys going out at this point this year.
Okay, and that, that could be the, the right thing to do. Maybe we think about that for next year, about how, how to, if we want to practice of, it's just a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a way to get a lot of information really quickly. And I'm also, I would love to ask people how they would like to engage with the school committee outside of this meeting. I think we can have some conjecture around how people want to talk to us. Maybe office hours would be, like, I like the idea of office hours. I don't like the idea of office hours if like nobody comes. So I think it kind of depends, I like, I want to know how people want to engage with us.
And the time. Do you, that's one of the things, I think, when, last year when we were doing both the calendar and the budget meetings, you know, some it was recognizing sometimes if it's drop off, people are dropping off and they have to rush to work. Or if it's pickup, you know, some of them, there are those like, I just need to get in and out, I don't have time to stop. So figuring out even within that, and then there are families, you know, if there are parents who are working and neither of those times work, but they are looking for an opportunity to engage. So I think finding not only the, the, how they want to, but when, like if it were in person, when they want to, when it, when it works best for them, I think would be important.
And like last year, we did kind of try to make a range of the opportunities available. And I, I think that worked fairly well. I mean, I'm sure it could have gone better, but being intentional around, you know, morning and evening and offering a virtual option, making sure you hit that range so that hopefully it has the best chance of working for, I think the only thing we didn't do was a weekend option last year. So yeah, maybe we could, you know, try to gather some input around what people would like to see, but I, I also would encourage us to not like overthink that too much. Because in the meantime, I think we can do something, you know? We can try something. And even if it's an office hour session where only one person comes. if it's an office hour session where only one person comes, like that has some value in it, I think, because that's an opportunity that that person wouldn't have otherwise had to have a connection. So I just, you know, I think this, this year, when we know that next year is actually really going to focus quite a bit on the superintendent search directly, and there will be structured many opportunities for community engagement through that process, I think this year almost presents like a luxury of just working on, innovating a little bit with like how we put ourselves out there. Granted, without, it can't have no structure to it, it can't be like too loose, but I think it also doesn't have to be like a perfect model either necessarily, so.
Go ahead.
We can keep, we're not gonna figure it out right now. I mean, this is something.
I have suggestions, since Nathan, you talk about survey, and Lizzie, you talk about office hour, and the little verb about what happened in the superintendent newsletter. Is it possible that we can just create a Google form, a anonymous Google form that just generally asking, like, if you would like to contact the school committee with any questions or concern, please use this Google form as somebody to us? In that way, if people do not have the time to come meet us during our office hour, if we decided to go to that route, or if they can still reach out without revealing who they are for those who doesn't want to say who they are. Doesn't make sense?
Then how do you?
Like, you just, you just don't collect their email address.
Right.
If they don't expect a reply, let me say, yeah. If they respect a reply, then they would let us know who they are, right?
Right. My, I was talking about, I don't know if I said something to Lizzie about this. Sometimes, like, I think it's important that we can put, I think, getting input but ensuring it's within our purview, do you know what I mean? So sometimes the expectation is if somebody comes and brings a concern and it has to do with staffing or a teacher or something that we have no, it's not within, and then is there been an expectation of resolution? Some of it can just be, the expectation can be, I mean, part of that could be, oh, that, you know, that's not, you know, that's not something the school committee does, I suggest you reach out to Superintendent Phelan, or you reach out to your principal or something. But if there's a way that we can, you know, maybe part of it is encouraging people also to recognize that they can send emails to the school committee and that it, you know, that it is anonymous, that, you know, that it's anonymous, but we're not, you know, sharing that with anybody, but that way there is the opportunity to share back. I'm not dismissing the Google form, I like, I just, some of it is, is sort of managing the, the content.
Could we set up like an annual survey at the beginning of the year that kind of, we set up like questions based on what we're responsible for, right? And then put that out there to collect the feedback to kind of, because I think with a lot of the things that we've done to engage the community, we, it's lower attendance, right? It doesn't quite represent the 4,000 students that are in our district, so I feel like some of the surveys we get more feedback from, so if that's something that we set up annually to collect feedback, then that could even, you know, like impact our, the goals that we set for ourselves and so on and so forth, just to collect, you know, and, and we can kind of base the questions around what we're actually responsible for, what we could do something about, you know, and just what can we do better, you know, like just for us, right? And I think it's something that we could kind of look at and just at the end of the year, when we go through our goals and say, okay, did we meet that? Do we meet like community expectations? You know, what can we do better? And just like kind of reflect on, on that for us as well, but I think getting more people is really important because I do understand, like having even been to some of those sessions last year for the calendar, just a smaller group, and I feel like it's, it's tough, and it's great, we have great conversations, it would be great to get more feedback, you know, and I know like a couple of years ago when we did the superintendent survey, like we had a ton of feedback, and it was important, like, you know, to hear all of that, so, so I, I think it helps us the more feedback we get, but I think if we can structure it so that it's stuff that we can actually, you know, address or think about, I don't know.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, I like that, I mean, I like having kind of annual surveys to be able to get feedback on, I think having it be structured around, as you're saying, the things we own and can assess that every year, and use that to guide goal setting, I love all, all of that, I think we should do it. I also really like, I like, I don't like having just generic kind of open office hours without really much direction for a lot of the risks that I think other people's have shared around, you know, the scope creep of like, it's not actually our job, and are people gonna show up, and is it the right time, is it the right people? You know, things like that. I really like Nathan's idea of we have a long run room for this superintendent conversation, let's start having it as like that, if we want to get out in front of people, use that as the opportunity to say like, hey, we're gonna have this to try and get out in front of you. And then naturally, if you're out in front of people, if they have other things they want to talk to school committee about, they will bring it up within that setting, but we also have like a goal we are trying to accomplish within that beyond just sitting in front of folks. And I think obviously, like as you're saying, a survey, we saw that with the school calendar, it was, I think, helpful to have the in-person sessions, but we got a lot more responses, obviously, through the survey, I think that would still be a part of that, I don't know if we'd need to do a survey on the superintendent stuff just yet, but I think that gives us, to Nathan's point, like gets us to sense the tone within the community probably, and helps set the tone within the community that this is something that you need to be, we all need to be thinking about, having conversations of what, what does this mean? So I like those things a lot.
I think for the superintendent search piece, I mean, clearly, as we discussed last time, we're not discussing it tonight, but in this community engagement piece, like we're waiting a response currently, right, from the state, so I think it's, we definitely need to gain clarity for ourselves about like what this interim phase involves for us before we open up engage, engagement with the community around the next steps. So that strikes me as something maybe more appropriate as the year goes on to kind of create those opportunities and, yeah, I agree, that could be good. I think another thing we could consider is, Val started out reminding us that at one point we had talked about like showing up to things happening in the community, and we could think about setting up listening session slash more so office hour type things like adjacent to other things that are gonna be drawing parents in, and it would be important to not conflict with anything or overcomplicate anything, but like I don't know what that looks like if there's, like, you know, Milton High School Info Night just happened, I'm thinking about, like, could we, in the future, that could be like a 30-minute, like come early for the Info Night session and check in with some school committee members if you want, I don't know, like tacking on to parent conference times or times that parents and families are already trying to show up for something, to make it more efficient for them, but I'm just glad that we're talking about this, because I think out of this, we can figure out some things to try. Did we?
Can I, just one other thing, we were talking about the, I also wonder, you know, we were talking about sort of the more formal versus informal things, and this whole idea of the community piece, and this might be really goofy, and I don't know how else to think about it, but is there a way that, I think a lot of us go to, you know, we all have different aged kids and we're involved in different things, but is there a way to almost like, and sometimes I know we're going as just a parent, but, but there also is not that expectation of, you know, you, you are an elected person, and so is there anything where you kind of go and you identify yourself? Like, is there something that if it were like a Monster Dash or something, and you have something on it that says you are a school committee, or there's something, some way that you're doing so that people know who you are and they ask, because I think that there are people who maybe in town government or more, you know, that they've been in it for a long time, people know who they are, they feel comfortable going up to them. I just don't know if that's something, or that we all take that initiative as we're out there and you're, if people are talking to you and that they know you're on the school committee. I just think it's, it's, it's an opportunity that, that it's, you're there and it's less formal, and it's not a table that you're asking somebody to come up to, it's just like, oh, hey, you know, I was thinking about X, and then to that point earlier, if it doesn't have to do with what we do, point them in the right, right direction, but if it does, you're like, okay, great, let me take that back or something, you're giving me a look like, you're like, I'm not wearing a tag, I'm not wearing a T-shirt.
It's the opposite, we have this conversation, I put, we did have a comms planning working group and wrote down some ideas, and it's in the school committee folder as a shared drive. I put a link to that document itself, a shortcut into today's folder, just to help, because we talked about a lot of it, and we talked about like going to these events, creating this event calendar, exactly what you're talking about, that was the idea of the T-shirts of, was gonna make T-shirts so that like you could like, you're not necessarily identifying yourself, but other people are like, oh, that's a school, I'm a gum. But yeah, that was the issue we got to, just the implementation of, yeah, do we, are we setting up a table at these places? I completely agree with Lizzie's point of it's gonna be way better to like go where people already are versus trying to bring people to you, because we've seen that time and time again. But also, you're going to a place where people are expecting to see you and wanting to engage with you too, right? When I'm at the football field, probably like setting up a table maybe doesn't make sense, maybe people do want to engage at halftime on school committee stuff. So yeah, just figuring that out, and figuring out, I think another thing that came up in the conversation, you can jump in and correct me, but was that sense too of like, well, it probably doesn't make sense to do that at every event, because every school committee feel, feel, member feel like they're on all the time and all their personal things, so like how do we try and divvy up that responsibility, and what are the events we, we think are most important, which is the point you made, like this calendar, this like events calendar, like what are the, the events we think we want to have some school committee representation in their T-shirts at?
So I think there are a lot of great ideas, so how do we, I think if we, I can take, or we can take everything that people had weighed in on, the ideas, compare it to the com plan that you had, and then have, let's come up with some, you know, review it and have some next steps, or maybe in one of the future meetings prioritize and say, okay, what are the two or three that we want to tackle, how are we tackling, what are the next steps, who's responsible for it, kind of have a real plan around it, and just, you know, maybe all, you know, maybe there's something I can put out that weighing all of them, and people can individually share back like the two or three that they think rise to the top, and then we can make a plan from there? Does that make sense? Because I think we have a lot to work for, but I think now we just have to implement it and find a way to move it forward, so. Great, okay. Thank you. The next thing is just, just, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up the, make sure the right agenda in front of me. The, just that the MASC, MAS joint conference is on November 12th through the 14th, if anybody wants to sign up for that. I think you can go right onto the site and register for that. They have the agenda of this, you know, what the, the topics are over the few days, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that, and if you, you know, just, if you want to let people know that you're going, that would be great. But those are the, those are the two things from the chair's report.
Are we, on the MA, on the conference piece?
Yes.
If anyone, so is it, I think this might be something we're talking about next time, but if anyone is gonna go, then we would need to like appoint that person as our delegate to the, what's it called, the?
To, to take votes related to the MASC resolutions?
To the resolutions, yeah, so, I mean, I've done that before, and I think my, a takeaway from that was it was valuable and not necessary, you know, if no one can go, can go, like.
We could look at, so people have the date, we could look at the next meeting.
The next meeting, like you're volunteering to do it.
Yeah.
I think we also look at the list of things that.
We took votes on the resolutions, and then whoever's the delegate, if there is one, goes and represents the Milton School Committee with their vote on behalf of the majority of the Milton School Committee on the resolutions.
So that is an agenda item for October 22nd?
For next time, yeah. So if, if someone is interested, yes, which I am not, because I can't make it, because it's my birthday and I'm not gonna spend it at that conference, so, I'm just kidding, it's really my birthday, but.
I saw your phone.
Just let you know, like.
By the next meeting.
Before the next meeting.
Yes.
Can you say the day one more time?
It's the November 12th through the 14th. It's really interesting, there's, the sessions are really so informative.
What date did the vote though happen? Because they're not voting all three days, just a?
No, the, I want to say it's probably, I'm sure it's in the agenda.
It looks like it's the last day.
The delegate assembly.
It is the 14th.
Friday, general session.
Friday, November 14th.
Yeah, so somebody would need to go.
At 3:15.
Not need to go all three days.
Not on Friday.
Oh, and it looks like someone can just attend the delegate assembly and not actually go to the conference, if we want our perspective included in the resolutions.
So just look at the, everybody if you're interested, look at the agenda, decide, and we can discuss that at the next, and vote on that the next meeting. The next item of business is the finance subcommittee report.
Great, finance subcommittee, we are, right now, meeting on a kind of weekly cadence, trying to get a lot of things done as we are approaching the, we are in kind of budget, the start of budget season. One thing we've been talking about, and I think we shared it earlier previously, is this like budget calendar. Put a copy of the current draft budget calendar in the meeting folder, we just kind of finished talking through it at our finance meeting right before school committee, a little off cadence, so finished chatting through that, so apologize for being kind of late. We do have a stated vote on here. If folks don't feel comfortable taking a free vote because it was late, that's fine. I think generally the idea is we want to make sure folks feel like they have a good sense of the timeline, that they don't have any concerns with anything. The goal here would be to then share this with the warrant committee chair, to just make sure we have their feedback on the touch point, the warrant committee as being an important point, and also share this with the budget coordination committee. We've already shared kind of our high level budget dates, the budget coordination committee update, but shared a bit of like our, this is generally when we have our budget finalized at school committee, which is the end of January, so we shared that, but I'd like to share the more detailed version with them, but want to make sure this gets y'all's eyes, and general thumbs up if folks are okay with a vote, then we can take that. Any kind of questions on the timeline?
No, because this is great.
Okay. No questions, then I will make a motion to approve the FY27 budget calendar.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. I should say for the record, this is similar to the school committee, like it's a living document, so if things change, we will share with you and we'll, we'll keep the update in these finance committee things, but feel good about this one. Appreciate the whole committee's help and work on this and the feedback from John and Katie, so it's, it's a strong budget season. Brings us to the general finance update, I just gave some of that, which is a lot of this work on this calendar. We've also been talking about, one of the parts of the calendar, as you can see, is kind of this discussion of really trying to set our budget conversations, ground them in these like budget philosophy, these priorities of like not just, you know, what position we want to add or program, we want to expand something, but like what are the things that really guide the budget decisions that then when you get down to the line items, they kind of are aligned. So Superintendent Phelan and Assistant Superintendent Blake have put together kind of initial draft that we talked about today, which looks really strong, I think the, not to speak for John, but like the idea generally is tying budget priorities to the district priorities, which I think makes a lot of sense and sounds right, and so we talked about that draft today, gave a little bit of feedback, and expect to kind of have that for the, to send out to the full school committee to, to look at, provide y'all's feedback on it as well, and again, use that as kind of the guiding philosophy, so that when we get into the budget conversations and have to have more challenging discussions of what, again, programs to expand or contract, and what positions to add or reallocate, we can kind of do that under this kind of guiding kind of philosophy of what we're trying to do for the district, so. One other thing to note is next week's meeting at finance, the town administrator. finance, the town administrator will be coming to the finance subcommittee to present information on expected revenues and expenses for the town, which will be an important, obviously a very important piece as relates to kind of our budget cycle. Those meetings are still cross posted if anybody else wants to attend, but otherwise, they will be recorded and posted, and we will do a share out here at the next school committee kind of of that, what we hear from the town administrator as well. But expect to have that. That's it for finance, unless there were things I missed. So we just voted on the budget calendar. We weren't screen sharing that as we voted on it. I wonder if we should just make sure it's in the notes somehow, or I'm not sure what. I just wanna make sure the public understands what we just voted on. Yeah, should we?
We have the budget webpage, we can post it on the budget webpage.
Okay. It's in technically in the meeting materials. What's that? It's in the meeting materials too technically.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, but that's, that's a good flag, to be posting on the budget overall time mark. I mean, budget part of the website and any meeting materials. That's right. Thank you.
But nothing else to add? That's great.
All right, then I will move on to approve vendor warrants. I've already shared out 12 and 13. I have 14 sitting in front of me, so we won't vote on that tonight. I'll try and sign that tonight so we can maybe vote on that next time if it's necessary. So I will go ahead and make the motion, and then if there's any discussion, we can have it. But I'll make the motion to approve vendor warrant 12 and the amount of $294,325.72 payable on September 25, 2025, as well as a vendor warrant 13 and the amount of $586,893.69 payable on October 2nd, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Great. That passes. I believe that is it.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, we have the policy subcommittee report.
Great. So policy met on September 22nd. We had, losing myself about John, and we also had Karen Cahill, the high school principal, and Carla Kozza as well. We discussed the policy IKFE, which is the competency determination policy, and also the graduation requirements policy. So at our meeting, we talked about the requirements for high school graduation and competency determination in the absence of MCAS. And we also, Karen came in and presented. She had a slide presentation of the requirements that we currently need. Our students, for instance, need 120 credits to graduate. They will be, and to be considered a senior in the class of 2026, they must have earned at least 85 credits by the 2025, 2026 school year, and students must carry 35 credits per year. And graduation requirements, including completing specific coursework and meeting the competency determination standard. For MCAS and coursework, students in the class of 2026 and 2027 who are already, who already took the MCAS are grandfathered in, so they're all set. But the students who haven't taken the MCAS, they have to complete English 9 and 10, integrated math 1 and 2, which covers algebra, geometry, and algebra II, and trigonometry, biology, and then beginning in 2027 US history. And students can also meet the requirements via MCAS appeals through DESI. So we had a draft version of this policy, and it has been since then filled in with the language. So you have that in your folder to look at, and then we're gonna have a first reading of that. And our second reading is not gonna be till our next meeting and vote, but it is there for you to review. It has a lot of details in it. So we did take a vote to bring it to this full school committee at our meeting. And then second, we have the graduation requirements policy, which is policy IKF, which is something that our district did not carry prior to this. So we are, we are also adding the appropriate language and adopting that policy so that we have it. And so that is also, should be in your folder to review with the, with the added language that's specific to us. And then we also briefly talked about a two-year world language requirement at our meeting. We are thinking of piloting a program beginning FY27 for the 26, 27 school year, focusing on conversational language instruction over two years. And then funding for this pilot will be secured as part of our budget planning process. And so that's something that we are going to have more conversations about and really start looking into doing. And then the other thing is, a lot of districts offer the seal of biliteracy award. So there is, has been a growing interest of, in language recognition and bilingual certification. So that is something that we're going to be looking at as well. So that was basically our discussion. So we're gonna have more information as we go through about, about the two-year language requirement that we are interested in adding as well. So those two policies are in your folder.
But the changes is not reflected?
No, that's the complete. So when we looked at the policy, we just looked at a, a presentation from Karen, and then all of that wording got into the policy. So what you're looking at is what we're looking, we didn't discuss that. Yes. So you were there.
I was there. I know. No, I thought we are going to look at a red line version right now.
I think it just has the added language, because it didn't have it before.
But there's no two-year language requirement thing in here.
No, that's not, that's not part of this. This is the graduation policy. That, that's coming, the other one. That was just a, this is just the competency determination and the graduation requirements policies.
If I remember, Principal Cahill also mentioned in our, one of the previous meeting that she was here, that she cut down the community service from 60 hours to very little. I don't remember how many hours, but it's definitely less than 60 hours.
She might have put 260.
Is it?
She, I totally remember her cutting it, but I.
Yeah, I remember.
I think it was more than 60 before.
Yeah, 60's not that.
Oh, was it? Okay.
I think that's the new one. That was for the program of study last year.
Okay.
Is, sorry, are we, are we discussing this now? Anna, could you just characterize, so it sounds like there's been a change to the community service requirement? Are there other major changes to the competency determination policy from its current state?
I would, yeah.
So this is a brand new policy.
Oh, this, this one is new.
Both of these policies are brand new. So there is no existing policy for competency determination. This is currently a DESI policy that has been recommended, and this version is the template that MASC has recommended all districts adopt. And essentially, this is the exact template from MASC, and we have actually just dropped in, like every district will, what their competency expectation will be now that MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement. So what you see in IKFE is this is standard language from, from MASC, and then when you look at the competency determination requirements, that is what we will be expecting in lieu of MCAS, because MCAS is no longer a requirement. This is pretty standard throughout the superintendents and high school principals' world right now, because we all know that this is going to change over the next two years as legislation begins to ramp up and the state begins to talk with DESI around how are we gonna move forward in the post-MCAS world. So this is basically a one or two-year competency determination policy that we will have. So we implemented the competency determination requirements that are pretty standard throughout most high schools that are all adopting this now, and the aligned courses that support that, which are the, remember now, this is embedded into the program of studies, because it used to say in program of studies, you had to, to graduate, you had to do X, Y, and Z and pass MCAS. This is basically supplementing that MCAS expectation.
Got it.
And then on the back, it asks you, how are you going to consider these additional considerations related to students across the, in Milton High, in Milton Public Schools, and it's very similar across all districts at this point in time. So this in context is part of the program of studies, and we're just supplementing this new information due to the change in circumstance.
Got it.
While exploring this, and leading the MASC expectation around this policy change, we realized that they were referring to a graduation requirement policy that Milton Public Schools just did not have in their policy book. So then we had to then bring that information forward. So we went back and got the template from MASC regarding graduation requirement IKF. So this is also not a, a red line version of an existing Milton Public School policy. This is the first rendition of the IKF graduation requirement, and this is straight from the program of studies as well. Again, with the language and the legal references and the sources from MASC noted below. So now we'll be whole when it comes to this in our policies.
Got it.
And the reason why we brought up the world language requirement is that member Loring has been asking about this addition to the program of studies as part of being in compliance with other expectations across the state for the mass core. So we have met with our world language director, and we will be coming up with a timeline for the introduction of a two-year minimum world language requirement, given that we have a model of world language courses of study in Milton. We wanna celebrate that. So we will come up with that. Xena has already started that work with the educators, and I'll have her come to a future meeting, putting out a timeline for how that will be conducted, how that work will be piloted, budgeted, and implemented over the course of the next three school years.
Okay, just go another, just a granular question here. On competency determination under coursework requirements, says that the student will demonstrate competency by successfully completing the following courses. What is the definition of successfully completing?
That was a big conversation we had at the South Shore Roundtable with about 15 superintendents two weeks ago. Folks were getting caught up on grade point average. What's the grade? How do you weight that grade? And at that point in time, the recommendation has been to, if you pass the course, that is the requirement. Because we know that they, this expectation will change probably through the legislation through DESI next year, and we figured we would leave the template as easily adaptable as possible, given that the next grades are going to pass with their MCAS scores regardless, and that by next year at this time, we'll probably be voting a new DESI and statewide expectation for graduation related to the lack of MCAS.
Yep. Okay.
My, I, I don't have a kid in high school yet, so I don't really know about this. I, I thought because we are very heavily with the language instruction since first grade, regardless of restrained attempt, I thought students are expected and required to take language class in high school. Is that not the case?
Students take language courses in high school. We offer Latin, French immersion, French as a second language, and Spanish. The majority of students do take a language and take a multiple years of languages. We're just trying to codify that expectation as a graduation requirement. There are some students who do not take a language, that even though they may take Latin in middle school, or French in middle school, or Spanish in middle school, when they get to the high school, do not wanna take a world language, even though it's recommended for college graduate, you know, for college acceptance, et cetera, for a variety of reasons. And the reason why we're pausing and looking at an implementation phase for some of our world languages to be part of this requirement is that some of those students have experienced the language class as a heavy curriculum that, that may be more accessible to them if we make it a conversation-based curriculum in a cultural-based curriculum. Our goal is to have students to be world travelers, whether they take French immersion, Spanish, Latin, et cetera. So having the curriculum match, the ability for our graduates to be able to speak fluently in the language in a way that allows them to travel and be a citizen in, in participating in the language and the culture of that community that they choose to visit, would be the predominant expectation for the curriculum to match that experience.
Yeah.
And not spend time conjugating verbs, but actually spend time learning how to converse and understand the culture, and then be able to be a member of a traveling group that can then go experience that community in that foreign country. So that, that's a shift in curriculum, and we're talking about that with our world language team as, as early as today in our early release work. And we'll be putting forward a plan for them to get that work together, pilot it, and demonstrate it to the school committee as well.
It feels like this work should not be just be done in high school. It seems like this work should have been done embedded, like the curriculum change, the teaching pedagogy for language, as what you just mentioned, it should be for communication purpose, right? So it seems like the focus should be how to make the language instructions starting from kindergarten, or starting from first grade up, to be more communicative. I think, I think that is what we should be focused on, so that we do not have students who go to high school and still cannot communicate in the language they have been studying for, how many years? Eight years, right? If they started with us in first grade, all the way to eighth grade, that's eight years of language instruction. Although it's not like a very consistent instructional time, like English and math and all those core languages, but I feel like the students should have a very solid foundation of the language that they already studying for that much time, right? So I feel like, is this, the whole thing about adding two-year language requirement, it should not be a new thing? It should be like an extension of what they have been practiced throughout before they attend high school. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's basically saying that the teaching pedagogy, so it should not be just conjugating the words and making sure the noun and the adjectives and words are aligned with each other and very grammatically heavy, but extend that to make it more communicational, so the students know how to use it in their real-life settings. So I think like the fundamental thing that we should be doing is the pedagogy of teaching foreign language.
So just to be clear, that's exactly what we're saying that we're going to do. That will trickle backwards towards the middle school and elementary curriculum, because it's gonna be a K to 12 school in sequence. The reason why we're voting the requirement for high school is that the high school can only have a high school graduation requirement based on the high school courses offered from grades nine through 12. So although the curriculum goes K to 12, and that work is ongoing, and quite frankly, our educators right now in world language work very hard, that if you do acquire the language in a way, we'll use Spanish as the example, instead of starting high school in Spanish 1, you're actually starting high school in either a Spanish 2 or a Spanish 3, that any other high school across the Commonwealth would be, you'd be starting in Spanish 1 in ninth grade. So we, there is a level of rigor that is happening in those courses that allow them to enter high school at a higher level of the language. We're just now asking our educators to look at that through the lens of more conversational curriculum and cultural curriculum, than, than in less than a more, less than the traditional way, more a different way. So that will be happening. And I think parts of it already do happen. I think it's a cultural component of our curriculum across all of our world languages, and our educators work hard to make sure students are engaged at a high level in a variety of different ways. But this would just formally tilt that lens towards a conversational curriculum moving forward.
May I add one thing before you join in? So in order to make sure the students are in the right level of the language class that they're in, when going to a high school, we will have to have placement tests, right? Otherwise, how do you know which students should go to Spanish 2, which students should go to Spanish 3, right?
So right now, what they do is when, when the students complete successfully whatever course they have through eighth grade, they are recommended by the teacher to start high school at a certain course level in their world language. So that determination is made by the educator and then passed over to the family, and then they decide that that's where they'll place their child. So that is a student-driven, teacher-recommended, family decision that they make about their child's course selection at the high school.
So what is successful, successful completion of the course? Like is it a A or B or C?
Passing course.
Passing course.
And if they enter the course and they're struggling with it, they may decide to shift their class and go down to a lower or go to a higher, similar to what happens in math, similar to what happens in English, similar to what happens in other content areas as well. well.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. Appreciate this, John. I agree with a lot of the sentiments you've had, which is like we, we are a unique district in that we have the French immersion program. We should be crushing language, right? And we, you know, I think anybody who's not in the French language, like expects something strong from the Spanish. We should have a strong Spanish program that is, is supporting our high school kids all to succeed because we are, we are investing in systems from, as you say, first grade all the way up to help prepare them. There's not new when they hit high school. They've had like lots of language development. Obviously, there's the exception of the kids who come in kind of mid-cycle, things like that. But, right, how are we building that up? So this should not be, you know, a crazy thing to, to accomplish in the high school. I think, I believe strongly in the requiring world language as part of the graduation requirement. And again, that's kind of dock coded in the mass core, simply because it's around, I think, graduation requirements around like, what are the things that kids will leave with that will allow them to be, have the most opportunities available to them when they leave, right? I think that, that is our job as educators, is we want to give them the skills and abilities to do whatever they want. And we know that colleges care about world language. You have to have world language in order to get admitted into many colleges. Colleges require language classes when you attend. And so if we are not pushing our students to, even if they're not, don't love it, and this is coming from somebody who did not love, was never very good at world language, but you got to push them to kind of get comfortable with that. And again, we should have as a district, a long enough runway where we are really supporting our kids and they are greatly excelling in these things, right? We should be out producing everybody in AP, you know, world language, AP French and all these things. And so I just think, to me, that is the importance of the world language requirement, is that it ensures that every Milton, graduating Milton High School student has as many doors open to them as possible if they choose to go to, to college, that they, they have full access to do that and to succeed and to make it through. And so that's, that's why I'd love to see it on there. And as I said previously, like I know there's kind of budget considerations of this, but I would really love to see something else around financial literacy as a graduation requirement, like creating some course. I think that's something that a lot of families, like, you know, people who have gone through college, you should look at surveys, I think I've shared some of those too, of like when people, you know, recently graduated, high school seniors, what do you wish you had gotten? Like financial literacy is top of the list of what everybody shares. And when you ask parents, like, what do you want your kids to have? Like financial literacy is the top of the list of the surveys they, and yet like no high school is still really doing that, is still really requiring that. And I'm not sure why. And so would love for us to, to think about that, create the model. Again, I know there are budgetary implications of that potentially in terms of like being able to sustain the enrollment that you would need to get all of our many kids at the high school kind of through a program like that, and the timeline for like which graduating class do you start that with? But would love to still have that as kind of a part of the conversation, just because I think those are great skills.
If I remember right, I believe the high school course of study has economic class.
They do. We have a business department. We do offer those courses.
Yeah, as an elective, yeah.
As an elective, but it's like not a requirement, but there, there are options out there for students to take.
If they didn't get it.
Yeah.
I think that would be the other thing.
Just in order to frame this at the end, is this is a really good news story, and our world language department is thrilled to be able to codify and celebrate the, the work that they do. So we, I think right before I left, we finally created the Access to the DELP, which is the high-level French immersion, French-speaking exam that all of our students take that recognizes them as a native French speaker. We just have been joint, we, we are joining the, the state bilingual literacy model, which allows not only to have students express what they've learned in school around what language they may speak, it's any student who happens to be bilingual if it's at home. So it's recognizing and valuing any family and student that's bilingual as something that's important, that's valued. So if I am a native speaker in Creole, I can actually get that bilingual literacy because if I can demonstrate my English, now I'm, I have the bilingual literacy mark on my graduation. And I'm, that's again, a nice thing to have. And now that we're a two-year, we will be working towards a two-year requirement for world language. It's another accolade and another codification of the fact that we value this program. So all good stuff. And we're, we're glad to, we will be presenting a three-year rollout of that, that Xena Hamad or myself have worked out, and the process has already started. So good news story for world language.
Just one other thing on the steel of bilingual literacy, I think that's great. The other piece is, it's not just a nice to have, but it also can save kids money, right? If, a lot of time, many colleges will take that and you do not have to take the foreign language course. And you can get college credit for it and therefore reduce your tuition costs. And that's great. Makes college more affordable, more accessible.
Yeah.
Yeah, same thing with, you know, APs and things like that. I had a question, someone from the graduation on the competency determination. Am I reading this correctly in that the MCAS portion, that we're saying that students can either pass the coursework or pass MCAS? Or is that not correct? Because I, my understanding is we, we could do that. There's nothing within the state referendum that stops us from utilizing MCAS as competency determination. What stops is that the state cannot require it, and it pushed it to the local level.
Correct. Some districts are just using MCAS as the competency determination and just leaving it there.
Yep.
We are not doing that. We are implementing our own. And we are doing so because we, we are awaiting guidance on what the next competency determination will be. So at this point in time, we are, we are not using MCAS as a, as a graduation tool. This brings up the whole other discussion that we can probably talk about next week is, what is the purpose of MCAS moving forward for our students, for our families, and more importantly, for the educators that use the results? The MCAS, in my opinion, as an educator and as a parent, I have always looked at MCAS as a, an adult tool for data to be used in order to inform how we organize our scope and sequence and pacing in our internal assessments related to the standards. And that the data that we get from MCAS allows us to do that adult work in order to better prepare and present and engage students in that rigorous environment from grade three to grade 10. So to me, it was never just about the students. This was in, the, the MCAS is a reflection on your school district and the adults in your school district, not necessarily the children who take the test. Because if they're prepared, they'll do well. That's our job. So I, I, I think that we'll be, it'll be interesting to see how that moves forward. There has been some discussion about the recent, the 2025 grade 10 scores by the state have dipped a little bit. And people are wondering whether the 10th graders decided just not to put that much effort into it, given the recent vote and the timing of the vote of no MCAS, and whether they thought it was helpful enough to, to complete the test. So, but in the end, as long as MCAS is around and it represents the standards that we want our students to know and be able to do, we will be using that as a guide to support our curriculum development and our pacing and our scope and sequence that we work with our teachers on in order to prepare students directed at, directing their learning to standards that we think are really important. So we think it's important to, to continue the work of using that as a guide for our work.
I guess I thought like, I think the state has actually, and they did this on a couple webinars, like they've come out and said they think the, the lack of the requirements hurt scores, right? They saw more blank answers in the test than they've ever seen before. They saw more blank essays than they've ever seen before. They saw more off-topic essay writing than they've ever seen before. All those were evidence, and the state scores went down about like seven points in ELA, more, more so than math. And so, yeah, I think that then makes it a difficult tool to assess student perform, like, or how we are doing as a school district if kids are not taking it seriously, if kids are not there. And so I think my question would be, is there a harm in utilizing an either-or approach of like there are two paths here? Kids can either take MCAS and therefore, you know, we can try and hold kind of a rigorous standard of like, this is important because this would allow you to meet competency determination requirements. And also, if not, then they complete coursework and can do that kind of at the same time. And so kind of either pathway allows students to reach competency determination. But I, I generally agree with you on point of MCAS is like an assessment tool for you as a school and you as a school district. But I do think there are larger kind of concerns within the state around what this, you know, what is the future? If, if kids aren't taking the assessment seriously, if they're actually not putting forth effort, if they're actually not showing what they know, then it's a worthless assessment completely. And at this point, we're still, at this point, we are still forced to have kids take the test. We're still forced to implement them based upon even federal law, not even just state law, I think. And so like what are the ways in which we can control the levers that allow it to be informative data and helpful data and not just a waste of, for 10th graders, six days of, of learning?
So I, I think the, we can, we can review what, I can speak to Principal Cahill about the, he believing both paths open to answer that question, and what are the pros and cons of that? I agree that we're, we're concerned about the MCAS data having value if in fact folks aren't taking it seriously over the next few years. And I think that's the question that our state Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is, is struggling with in a way to, what is the next step in this work to ensure that school districts have the ability to assess where students are and what needs to be done differently in order for them to get to a standards-based education? So this is a bigger question that we don't have to figure out in Milton as much as we need to contribute to the work that's happening at DESI in order to make sure that whatever the next phase of this type of work is, that we, we have some input into it wherever it's possible. This, this is going to shift over the next two to five years for sure.
If we implement MCAS tests, does it cost us any money through the district to the implementation?
We really have to do them, even if it's not a competency determination requirement, we still have to give it.
Okay.
There's no cost of, of the time.
So it doesn't hurt to have both options available, whether to take it or not take it, and completing all the coursework?
There's no, there's no financial cost to it in either situation.
So this is the first reading. I will discuss this matter and provide any updates if needed to the second reading that will happen on October 22nd. This does have a requirement to be submitted, so we, we do have to take action. And I only will add to the policy group that's meeting in the next two weeks that there was another DESI expectation to have middle school exploration policy be voted by November 1st. So we'll ask for an expedited approval of that at our next meeting, which is essentially talking about what our middle school does in order to support students to be aware of and educated on their vocational opportunities. And because we are part of the Blue Hills Regional, it's, it's a very simple process that we already do. So I asked Bill Fish and his team to codify that work and put it within the M A S E template that was provided. Again, this is a new policy, and that will be presented on October 22 after it's passed through policy. But that will be a factor in that one as well. And at that point, we'll be whole as it relates to these requirements for DESI, hopefully for this year.
Just one more, one, I'm sorry. The only other thing I was wondering, John, is if y'all talked about like the PE requirement, right? It's state law, kids have to take PE each year of schooling. However, I know districts provide, allow some students to utilize sports participation as a substitute for the PE requirement, right? That that like meets the expectation of their like learning around physical education because they're doing sports, which then opens their schedule up to do more electives, more things they would like to do. Maybe they want to do PE, they can still opt into it, but it just reduces some of those restrictions in terms of every year at least one of their courses is physical education. I don't know if that's something Milton has looked into doing. We obviously have a very robust athletic program that y'all do a tremendous job of. Lots of kids are taking active participation of that. They're spending lots of hours in baseball, or hockey, or football, or, you know, all the different things. And so, you know, it, it has always seemed silly to me that, that, that is not somehow taken into account of like, we have very, very active kids. And so the need to do that kind of within the school days if they are doing that significantly outside of school hours. But again, just, just wondering if that's something y'all, y'all talked about, looked at, just to again, open up, mostly with the avenue of opening up opportunities for kids to take other courses and other areas of interest.
Does that be for high school? Okay.
So I am familiar with that, that type of shift, and I can talk to Principal Cahill and the athletic director about that and, you know, figure out that's something we want to include in the program of studies. There's a lot of nuances to that that would be involved in having experience with that. It's, it's a, it's something definitely to consider, but there's a lot of smaller pieces that we want to be thoughtful about.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. Negotiation Subcommittee Report.
The Negotiation Subcommittee had its first meeting on September 24th. And as we all know, Mark and I represent the school committee on the Negotiation Subcommittee. Others representing Milton Public Schools on the team include obviously Superintendent Phelan, our HR Director Linda Damon, our attorney, Joe Emerson, Assistant Superintendent Carla Coso also attended that first meeting. And both she and Assistant Superintendent Blake will be participating in the negotiations, sort of to consult and inform the process as we go along. The purpose of that September 24th meeting was just to begin planning and preparing for the bargaining process. And we're planning to anticipate our first meeting with the Milton Educators Association taking place on November 4th. That meeting will be to establish ground rules and do some housekeeping to plan for negotiations around scheduling meetings for future bargaining sessions and so forth. And then it would then be in those future sessions that we begin to exchange proposals. So this is just a quick update, sort of where we're at. The process has begun, but it's very much in the beginning stages. The Negotiation Subcommittee will be meeting, you know, before and during those sessions to do the preparation. And once we've gotten underway and started exchanging proposals, at that point, we would begin to have executive sessions with the full school committee to keep you all informed as we go. And that's it. Mark or Superintendent Phelan add anything?
Nope, thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. The School Building Committee Report.
We actually did not have a meeting. It was canceled because of just none left to talk about. Only thing that's coming up is there's an enrollment meeting with the MSBA to kind of discuss and hopefully finalize kind of enrollment projections, which are used for the School Building Committee process on October 20th. So that's the next thing. And then we will have our next meeting on October 27th, School Building Committee.
The Budget Coordination Committee Report.
You want to take it?
Sure. We had the last meeting, I think just on Friday. Mark was there, Superintendent Phelan was there, Assistant Superintendent Blake was there. We spent most of the meeting sort of continuing to like norm around the purpose of the committee and what, what success looks like for that committee, sort of at the end of our, at the end of, you know, at the end of the year, basically, that we have this first, first stab at, at progress. And, you know, I think, I think we, like, and others who joined at end, because I'm, I'm probably not going to remember everything that was, that was agreed to in there. But I think, I think having a, having number one, was building a shared understanding of the budget management process and like the annual planning process, I guess, for, for budgeting. And that's sort of step one was what we actually voted on tonight, was kind of having a joint understanding of the order of policies and practices, where extending beyond people's service commitment to the committee. So that, you know, 10 years from now, that same group isn't having the same conversation. And then starting to talk about a policy-making process so that we have policies around And then starting to talk about a policymaking process so that we have policies around, around the use of, say, reserve funds. We didn't actually do any of that work, but we talked about that work. I think one point of discussion, and Mark, feel free to come in here because you remember him having this, is the, the sort of decision-making for that committee versus making sure that we, like, that we weren't making decisions in the room that this committee hadn't already agreed to. I really appreciate, Mark, you sort of raising that in the group and then making sure that we had a vote on this tonight so that we weren't committing ourselves to a timeline in the room that this whole group wasn't already in agreement with. Anything else shoot out there? I'm sure I've missed something.
No, I, I liked, part Nathan brought up in the meeting was just, you know, a goal being kind of creating a repeatable process within, with the coordination across the committees that, I like that. I think we've been thinking about that within the finance committees process for just school committee, but how do we do that as a whole town so that it's not dependent on people, all the points he's made? So that was good. And then, yeah, anything else I agree with?
Nathan, question? What did you say about policy? You said it went up.
There is interest in the committee, and I don't think it is clear yet exactly how this works, but there is interest within the committee to establishing financial policies for the use. There may be other use cases here, but the, the issue raised during the, during the committee meeting was establishing policies for the use of town reserve funds.
So just to be clear, would, those would be policies established by the Select Board? I mean, this committee is not empowered to establish policy for the town, right? It's an advisory committee?
Yes. Yeah, advising on that, yeah.
Thank you. Just clarity.
Yeah, I mean, again, as Nathan said, I think there is some of that, like, what is this committee's role versus the existing committee, like, this Select Board owns, obviously, their portion of the budget, we own our portion of the budget. Where does this committee fit in? How it can be helpful? I think that's what, like, the ground is trying to figure out. And then at the same time, I think something we're trying, trying to be mindful of is, at this point, we don't think it is appropriate to be sharing budget information first with that committee before it gets to the rest of the members here. Like, we wanted to come through Finance Committee, then School Committee, and then budget, and then hit Budget Coordination Committee, kind of as the pathway. And so that is like the lens in which we are kind of trying to approach that based upon, I think, conversations we've had here and general alignment. And then how we're balancing that, obviously, with like timelines and like the tight timelines around budget and how often this committee meets versus the rest. And so how do you kind of thread, thread that needle for both of them? But that, that is the general lens in which we've been kind of trying to approach it. And I think there's a hope that, Nathan hit on this, like, that we are just pulling the conversation also to this higher level, this five-year view, which as a town, we haven't really had kind of the opportunity to do in the last couple of years.
I really appreciate that piece, and I think, you know, the way I, I had originally understood the intent behind the committee was it's a sort of, it's some infrastructure for shared reporting out from the different committees. And so that really makes sense that, you know, our representatives to the Budget Coordination Committee are bringing there what this School Committee has already sort of worked through. And so I know that in the beginning, as you're getting off the ground, like, there's a little bit of just sorting out, yeah, the sequencing. And it's good to get that all sort of in place before the budget season like fully takes off. But I, I do appreciate your sort of emphasizing that's the goal. So that, and I'm speaking as a member of the School Committee who is not on the Finance Subcommittee, you know, I definitely appreciate being up to date with what's happening, you know, here. And then it becomes shared, sort of with, with the town. I think that's the proper, like, order of operations there. So I really appreciate you sort of advocating for that. And I'm, I'm glad we're doing this. I mean, I think where we were a year ago, this feels like a big improvement, to, to be ahead of the process in this way. So thank you for that.
Any other questions, comments? Great. Thank you, guys.
The next item is the approval of the Milton School Committee minutes for the nine, the September 17th, 2025 meeting. These are all in the folder. Does anybody have any changes or?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 17th, 2025 Milton School Committee meeting.
Second? All in favor? Great. It's passed. The last item is discussing agenda items for the next meeting on the 22nd. Right now, we all have the calendar in, we have that shared calendar, but right now we have...
Yeah, I'm updating that as we speak. Yeah, not technology-wise, but on paper. So we have a very full October 22 slate.
Yes, I was just noticing that.
So let me just go, I, I can go through them because I'm trying to make some, we have the vote of the MASC resolutions, and we choose to have someone go and vote. We would like to also present the capital request from the Technology and Facilities Department as part of the budget process. We have the presentation from Kat DeRoche on the Early Literacy Initiative. This is the first meeting of two. We'll come back in February. We have the first quarter report that we would like Katie to present on. We potentially have MCAS summary of scores, which we can always push to November 5 if we wanted to. We also have the field trips that we wanted to vote that we heard tonight. And we have the two policies that we discussed tonight, plus the middle school vocational pathway policy that we would need to vote that night as well. So certainly if it's a night, so when we meet Amanda, we can maybe pace that out a little bit to see if we want to move anything. Some things are not movable based on the timing of the need for regulations, but we'll take a look at that for a full slate.
I would say we'd also want to share kind of your updated draft budget priorities document.
Amanda, we had also requested a response from the Commissioner by October 18. Hopefully we get that. And if we do...
That would be in the, yeah, that would be in the, we could add that to the Chair's report.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we just have a placeholder there.
Yep. Anything else that...
We will have both policy and facilities updates. We're next week.
Some facilities looking over the capital things.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that there is, there is, I just, you didn't mention it, but I can check, but there is going to be a report from them, so hopefully we all share that.
So policy, facilities will be, we...
Sorry, next meeting is the 22nd?
22nd.
No, we won't have school building at that point.
And we have a Budget Coordination Committee meeting again?
We will have Budget Coordination, yeah.
I will share the, a short report about a meeting with the student representative.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we can look at that one. Okay, I think that's everything.
Your streak of short meetings was never going to last.
I know.
Well, there's always pacing. We should all pace ourselves here.
You've done a good job with it, John.
Still working on it.
Somebody vote soon, so we're, oh, I just hit 9 o'clock, forget it. All right, last thing, so if I can, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.